Good evening tonight. Athens City Council has a couple of committee meetings, Planning and Development, and then when we're done, the Finance Committee. We have a number of items on the Planning and Development Committee agenda. The first one is the proposed development agreement with Holzer. And I think that Attorney Sierra Meek is here to talk to us about that. Did you want to introduce this?
Yeah.
Okay. Congratulations.
Congratulations on the baby.
Well, thank you. He's three months old now. Doing good. Okay, so we're back here again, and we're talking about the development agreement. I think everybody has a copy of, or has seen a copy of, the development agreement. Basically, it's what we've talked about before, that there's a 64 acres approximately, but we're only asking to annex in about 45 of those acres. The remaining acreage is actually in the city limits at this point. I don't know if you want me to go through point by point, or if there are specific things that you want to talk about.
I think there were a couple of specific things.
Okay.
If people had a chance to look at that. The first is just the question of where we are in the annexation process. That because those annexation petitions are in the hands of the city, and we're really close to that, I think that there's a real question about whether we need to do a development agreement, or whether that's a wise thing to do. Because the annexation process is pretty far along.
Right. That really, I think, would be something for Gary Hunter to address. But I think what we have looked at is just trying to get some type of agreement. I know that there's been concerns with council before about some zoning issues, and about who's going to pay for what services, and for water, and things like that. And so this kind of just lays it out and shows those details, so that everybody is above board, and everybody can see exactly who's going to do what, and whose responsibilities those are. For instance, the zoning, I don't believe, has been changed at this point, but this development agreement does address the zoning issue. And I'm not aware of whether or not the tap fees have been paid at this point, but that, this also addresses who's paying tap fees, and things like that.
It's my understanding that the Law Director believes that since we are so close to annexation, that we, it might make sense to just wait and go ahead with the annexation, and handle things there.
Okay.
I believe that the zoning for the annexation is in front of the Planning Commission on your next agenda. Do you have any comments on this in general?
I met with Todd Fowler last week, and the only things that were really in there that I saw that was the potential request or acknowledgement that they may be asking for some variances of the zoning board in one instance. And that's to do with the sign ordinance, and they don't have their signage plan done yet. So they don't know if they're going to ask for a variance, or not ask for a variance. But that's really something that the Zoning Board of Appeals issues, not council. The other item that we talked about was parking, but the review by code says they have adequate parking, where they're not through the total processes of the Shade Tree Commission as to landscaping. But that's because it just isn't through the process yet. And they're not real concerned about that, because they won't be planning it until next year sometime. So the same thing, signage's just not on their list yet, because that's, you know, one of the last things they do. And since the signage at Columbus Road was in conformance, that feel it probably will be in conformance. But again, that's a zoning board issue.
I think Holzer, in previous talks, we had just talked about doing a very tasteful sign that addressed what the businesses were in that area. And whether or not that needs a variance, at this point, we wouldn't know. But something that was very tasteful, that would be in keeping with the area. And like the mayor said, at this point, we don't know that it wouldn't be within the code at this point.
Nancy.
One question that I have is the development agreement has us agreeing to pay for a road, which is probably the biggest issue for many of us. And I guess we're in an environment where if we would agree to this, the cost may have, would have to be borne by the street fund. And I think that, we don't know the cost, but I don't think we've done this before in an entity like, for example, Oblennis Hospital, which is not-for-profit, is a nonprofit, did not ask us to participate in any way in their roads. And so I guess what I wonder is if it would be in the interests of the citizens of this town to do such a thing in a case like this. I mean, I know the agreement says, well, we'll give you three-quarters of an acre, but bottom line is, it could be a very pricey thing. And generally, developers pay for that. I mean, I haven't, I can't think of a time when the developer hasn't paid for it, so, in this city. So that's a sticking point for me.
It's my understanding that the representatives of Holzer were working with the city in order to receive grants and funding to pay for that road. And then part of the contribution from Holzer would be to turn over a portion of that road. And then at that point, the city would have that portion of the road, and could build a bike path, and use that portion of the road for other purposes that it needs. Is that the, an accurate portrayal?
Yes, the access road funds through ARC, which this would qualify for, if they get the change of the entryway, through the limited access right-of-way would be 80 percent funds. And then Holzer has committed to me that the donation of the land, and any other dollar cost for the city's local match would be paid for by Holzer. What we get into is that we would be maintaining that road in the future.
But it doesn't say that in the development agreement.
Well, we need to change it, then.
Well, maybe we just need to follow the Law Director's advice and not do it.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry.
Jim.
Whether we pass this or not, this is an understanding between the two parties. So I think it needs to be clear.
That the city will...
What the mayor has said makes it clearer to me that he is just agreeing that the city will be a partner in...
Which is true.
Going after grants. We've done, we have done that before.
We would do that, yes.
Yeah. But the 1.489 acres, you're going to, it would be vacant land, or is that part of the street system?
That is the street. And there would also be room to expand the bike path, possibly.
A 50-foot right-of-way, the curb and gutter street would be 24 feet, and then we'd have a sidewalk at least on one side, and then a bike path on the other.
And I guess I'm not familiar with the site, what one-and-a-half acre?
Well, what they want to do is directly across from the exit ramp, as if you were heading to Coolangale, you're off on East State Street, is build that as the access point into the whole five or six properties that are there. So that that road would then go all the way down to the property that's under land contract with the Hineses, and by AutoTech. So it would go the whole distance and into Holzer's parking lot. There are easements right now that exist over the Hayes prop, or Hayes, it's got a partner in that one, the hotel and AutoTech. But right now, they also have easements to the current entry point. And so legally, they have to work out, how can they switch entry points, because ODOT will only allow one entry point in the limited access highway. And traffic studies have shown that being at the exit ramp would be better than where it is currently located, which was a farming entry point at the time it was done, and was later converted by Mr. Hayes to a commercial entry point.
So we would get the one-and-a-half acres that basically includes that road that serves the other?
Right.
But not necessarily, we don't really want the interior roads within the Holzer?
No, we wouldn't be in their parking lots and such, no.
Okay, that's what I understood it to say. Thank you.
Would we have to go for a grant and pass it as council anyway, to do this, right? So I mean, what would be the point of saying we're going to do it, because we are going to do it, we said it in public now? I mean, we certainly will go for the grant, but I think that at the point it's done, we certainly will have, we'll know our financial situation more, and we'll be able to make a better decision. And we'll have Holzer, at that point, telling us, again, that they, with whatever time it is, that they will pay their part.
Bojenka.
Okay. What would happen if we did not get the grant to build the road?
If Holzer wants it built, they'd have to do it at their own expense. Unless council decides to use city funds to match it. I mean, that's, you're the only one that can decide on those kinds of issues.
Yeah, well, I guess I would say, you know, I'm uncomfortable with the wording in the agreement, as it currently is, since it doesn't really, as Jim said, really lay out the reality of going for the grants, et cetera, et cetera. It just kind of sounds like we're responsible. And I guess that would be, you know, a question for Holzer, you know, if grants didn't come through, and there were no road.
They, every meeting I've had, I've qualified it in that manner, and they say they understand that.
They understand that it's possible?
Well, they understand that if the city doesn't get grant money, we can't afford to...
Build the road, right?
To build the road. Because, look at it from Holzer's standpoint, they, they're willing to put the 20 percent local match up and the land that's construction cost, but usually, your land donation also serves as local match. But there's a cap on these of $400,000 or so. But if Holzer would have to build from their parking lot, their own right-of-way through the easement they have, to the existing, in front of the insurance, and, you know, there's three buildings there, that's way more than 20 percent cost of going the rest of the way. I mean, it's a cost savings for them. So they don't have any, but they are prepared in their budget to build that road to that point, if we're not able to change the right-of-way point. As I said, the city really does no interest in doing the road that isn't to where the traffic engineers say the road should be.
Paul.
In terms of this road, you're talking about putting it so right across from the exit of 50. The other one gets closed off, is that correct?
That'd be correct.
Okay. So it's really just moving it down with the intention, if you have a need to put a light there, you can do something like that? Is that somewhere in the...
You could, if that ever generated that much capacity, but their analysis is still under 500 cars per hour on peak, so that you wouldn't generate a traffic signal. But what you can do at that location is also do a turn-off lane, because with the bridge there, you really don't have enough room to do a turn-off lane. And that's a safety issue, and you might be able to do some widening of the exit ramp with ODOT, because then you could, you'd be going either right-hand turn into town, or directly across. So you'd probably want a little wider lane width there.
And in terms of the annexation, this takes us to across the road all the way, to the edge of 50, the middle of the road, or just this lot?
Takes us to the right-of-way of 50, yes.
Okay.
Into the middle of the road. I mean, that's an issue I've asked about, because, but that, we don't own on the other side of that right-of-way out through where the Holzer property is located.
Okay.
I think this has been a good discussion, and I have a better understanding of what the intention is with the access road. I think, given our experience with the development agreement for Beaumont Green, where we had included the expectation that variances would be sought, but then we ran into issues because it has not yet been annexed into the city, that the Board of Zoning Appeals didn't feel that they had jurisdiction. We are so close to the process of getting the annexation moving through council's readings, because I, I think the Planning Commission has determined that they do not need to have a public hearing, since we'll be having one at council. It's my inclination to just say, let's not do the development agreement. Most of the things in here are really standard, and it sounds like there's a good understanding between the city and Holzer about dealing with the access road. And just proceed with the annexation when it comes to us. Committee members? Okay.
Okay, now, annexation, the annexation petition has been delivered to council, so that would anticipate next, okay?
Just stay there.
I won't go anywhere.
Jim.
I ask a general question that was raised here, for the mayor and Service Safety Director. The estimated tap fees are talked about, the fees, water tap, sewer tap, and $150 for the stormwater. I think that's the first time I've seen that mentioned. What do we get for that? What do we do with the stormwater, storm sewers? We put those in along...
Gives into the sewer fund, because sewer fund functions both as stormwater and sewer.
Are we, I guess when I'm asking, are we actually laying pipe for stormwater also? Or is that just mechanisms to direct it to detention area?
No, I think, in that particular case there, what they're going to do is discharge to the river. Under there probably be the drainage for the parking lots and the roof drains would then be carried out directly to the river, because they're adjacent to it. And there's currently no system out there. They're going to create it for that area. Now, down further, where the other developers are, I think there's a ditch line there in the, Ray, is that a ditch that we convey it to the road there, I think?
At the Holzer side?
Now, for SuperAid and AutoTech, and the others.
Yeah, they have, they have an existing storm system that goes to the road.
Okay. Paul?
I know, this is, following up on Jim there, $150 is pretty low, considering other tap fees are usually higher. How's that structured? Is that something council does, or you do?
Per building, yeah, council sets the fee, and it's per building.
When was the last time it was changed, Doc Man?
I have no idea.
I don't, we did water and sewer, we did not look at do storm drains, and that's been 11 years ago, so it's been a long time.
Okay. Take a look at that on your agenda sometime?
Finance, personnel, maybe, or something.
City services, maybe.
Okay. The next thing we have are the annexations that are before council. This is Holzer and Door Lane. We've received both of those. My understanding is they're both going to be on the next Planning Commission agenda to look at the recommended zoning designation. And then, because the Planning Commission doesn't see a need for a separate hearing there, since we'll be having hearings, we will be able to discuss them in more detail at our next committee meeting. We'll be able to hear what the zoning recommendations are, and move those forward. I don't think we really need a ton of discussion, but...
So is the, are the designations part of this mirrored in this agreement? Because I don't, I didn't have any paperwork on that, or...
She does.
Okay. Next time, then.
Those big folders with the annexation are in the office. The clerk has them. But the Planning Commission generally makes a recommendation to council about what they think the appropriate zone is for new areas they're coming in. And I think that we're looking at R1 for...
For Door Lane.
For Door Lane, and the designations that are described in the development agreement for Holzer.
Okay.
That's your understanding?
Okay, I have a problem having moved the sewer tap through for the Door Lane one. It seemed to me that we were told, if not outright, several times, that it was only going to be for a single unit consistently. Now we have two parcels. And I guess what I want to know is, how is this going to work? I mean, I just wonder, how many times will we have this happen to us, where people come in and say one thing, and then it comes back, and it's got a little division out? I mean, what is going to happen here? I mean, we can't not annex them, but it just seems it was a little disingenuous to talk about this, oh, I have this wonderful big piece of property where my house will sit, it'll only be my house. We can go back and look at the videos, if you guys want to. Fool me once!
What's the second parcel?
Are we committed?
Well, you've got the island that is the R1, so should we just do open space around the other?
Nice trees?
Yeah.
Very steep.
Very steep. I mean, just how many times, I mean, how many of those, oh, well, I'm going to build a house up there, all of a sudden, it's going to be divided into multiple units? I don't know. Maybe somebody can figure that one out.
Mayor Abel, or Ray, do either of you, that has been subdivided?
Yes, it has.
Okay.
Is the frontage adequate, Miss?
Oh, of course.
Oh, yeah, they, what, what they did when they came in, because I talked to Steve about it, and there's nothing, I mean, if somebody wants to subdivide off one piece from a larger piece, that's, as long as it's got all of the requirements of the code, and the state code, you just do it.
I think we said it's...
What was, I know, what was said by the owner, or the representative from the owner, was that, gee, for mortgage purposes, we just got the land that, what's under mortgages on, to have a mortgage on it, not the whole tract of property. But it leads to, and Nancy's exactly right, that subsequent owners may sell off that piece, may subdivide it more, and you have that problem. The suggestion of zoning it as open space may be, you know, one that we probably should, you know, Ray and I will remember that we're next to Planning Commission when we talk about it.
So both parcels coming into the city, is that the case?
Yes, the annexation petition was filed, and there was only one parcel.
Okay, and now it's been cut in half, and they still went in?
Well, it's not, it's...
It just took a small portion of the...
Small portion, two or maybe two, three acres off of the 30-some acres.
Sounds like good open space to me.
Yeah.
Well, I have to put some water in there because of steepness of terrain, et cetera.
Okay.
Some reasons.
Anything else about the annexations?
No, we'll get them through as quickly as possible, won't we?
I think so.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we are back to looking at site plan review. Everybody should have a copy of this, and it has green ink to show the changes that we're talking about. And I have a couple of extra copies for people who may want them. What I thought I'd do is just talk through the changes that I'm proposing, and they came from a couple different places. They came from attending a meeting of the Planning Commission, attending another meeting of the Chamber of Commerce Local Government Committee, and talking individually with Peg Cohn, a Planning Commission member who was not able to, she was out of town and wasn't able to be at that meeting. So I've tried to incorporate all these different concerns. The first thing you'll see is that I was typing too fast, and there's a typo in the first one in the ordinance language. One of the things that we discussed with the, at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, was the idea that it would be good to look at this in a year, see how many cases it applies to, and if there've been any problems in the procedure. So just put in there that we're committed to evaluating and reviewing it in a year, and that we're asking for a report on the number of cases, and any concerns that came up in terms of implementation.
Could we make it 1 October 2008?
Okay.
Because that would give us time to respond if there were any changes that we saw.
Okay.
That we thought of. Somebody thought of.
Okay. The next one, in the intent, a concern was raised at the Planning Commission about whether some people might assume that this replaces all other, you know, development-related sections of code, so just to add a sentence clarifying that this doesn't replace other sections of code. If you're in the floodplain, you still have to look at the floodplain regs. If you're on a steep hillside, you still have to look at, you know, the hillside issues. So just stating that simply. In 4103, there was a lot of discussion about whether there should be some threshold where a commercial or industrial project does not have to go through site plan review. And at this time, a compromise seems to be, if we looked at 5,000 square feet as a threshold, so smaller projects would not trigger the site plan review. That's a very specific thing that we're going to want to come back to when we look at it in a year. Is that too small, is that too big? Are there issues coming up around that size? Nancy?
Could we ask, when Debbie Walker's doing this finally, to use the correct terminology, so we have business or industrial uses as defined by the zoning code? Because we've done that in other places, do you know what I mean? You could say that a commercial, a landlord is a commercial venture, if you've started twisting in it, so I'd like to make sure it applies to business uses. And so that would mean, it's a minor thing, but it's more of an expansion of something new. And the example that was used for us, and I'll go along with Debbie, and I appreciate her hard work in getting this to the point where we don't have a whole bunch of angry people out there. I mean, not that they were ever angry, because we had a couple pretty decent discussions, but the 5,000 square feet they used was CVS. Now, I can't imagine why an entity that's a national entity would have trouble meeting the requirements of this. But, you know, in the spirit of, let's see what happens, I'll go along with you.
Thank you. The next thing, in the procedure for approval, in our earlier work session, people said, why don't you justify in the amount of the application fee now? But then the Planning Commission said, you know, you've taken that out of the code everywhere else, and put it in a separate place. So I'm recommending that we change it back to as determined by council, and then we have to amend that section that sets the permit fees at the same time. Then, on the next page...
Epi?
Yes.
Is it possible to get that rolling as well? So if we pass this before, this is on a table right now.
We should have it up for first reading when we substitute this next week.
Just wondering.
Yeah. The $100 permit fee, so that that's in place at the same time, that goes into effect at the same time that Title 41 does. Then in 4104A, where it talks about the different boards and commissions, the Planning Commission thought leaving it as determined by the Service Safety Director would encompass whatever boards and commissions, you know, have a review process. It may not always be the Shade Tree Commission and the Disabilities Commission, if there are others, or if one of those goes away. To just not have those, that list of them. In D, the question was raised, oh, I'm sorry, in C, there was a, it said Service Safety Director and other city officials, and that was more of a grammatical preference that the, I think Joanne just wanted it to say, "they shall review the plans." In D, the question was, 15 days from when? So we referred it back to C, so that there's a specific timeline that keeps moving. And then in F, there was a concern raised about whether the appeals process was too circular, to appeal back to the Planning Commission when they just made their decision. So Gary recommended this new language, just referring to the appeals process spelled out in Ohio Revised Code.
Before you go to the next page, could you envision a time when we'd have a Service Safety Director that wouldn't send us to the Shade Tree Commission? Because it's already covered as on page one, this review does not replace other applicable sections, right?
I think so.
Okay. It just seems that, you know, we wouldn't want to lose that, since we've worked so hard to get it.
Right. I think part of the issue was looking at the different things that it can apply to, if it's an, if it's an expansion of an existing business, or some modification that wasn't really changing anything in the landscaping. That there's a place in there where the Service Safety Director can list in writing reasons that certain things don't need to be provided. So I think it was in keeping with that.
Okay. I would say that if they're expanding, they should, and enlarging their parking lot, it would be, given the spirit of the most recent update of the landscaping ordinance, it would be in keeping with that, that they would add the trees. And so I hope it doesn't become a way around that.
That'll be something else we should ask for in our report.
Okay.
In 4108, for some reason, that was called site plan content, which is the same as the next section. So since it's about the bond, it's just simply called bond now. next section, so since it's about the bond, it's just simply called bond now, and since there've been some questions about bonds with some earlier projects, actually Lance Rep suggested that it needs to say that this bond be in favor of the city, and it just said may be required, so it's saying may be required by the service safety director, just to make that process a little bit more clear. In 4109, the title had been site plan content for new construction. Because the service safety director can waive the specific things in writing, we, it was simpler just to say site plan content, and then it'll be for anything that comes under Title 41. The part where it says it was deleted, the name of the project, that language was in there twice. That's the same language that's in A. In F, those things are all the same. If the planning commission decided they would rather see a list instead of a really long sentence.
Yeah, we know we're in trouble another time.
In, in H, the lighting, they wanted it to refer to all of the sections of the zoning code that talk about lighting. In K, again, it's just making it into a list instead of a long sentence. In R, the traffic impact study, there is a concern that, we talked about, there is some industry standard list that spells out which kind of projects would create the, the number of, of cars that would trigger the need for a traffic impact study. So people wanted us to refer to the actual list that is the bible on this topic. So we've got the name of the trip generation manual in there, and the planning commission had a concern that our population in Athens changes so significantly. There are times of year when there are a lot fewer people here than in other times of year. So just saying that it needs to be a period of time that's typical for the area, so that the traffic study means There's some corrections to bullets and numbering, and then-
I'm sorry.
Yeah?
It seems to me, saying it's typical for the area when there's huge diversity of population. Yeah, I mean, it just doesn't seem to me that that solves anything, unless it at least means something, that it could be typical in the summer or typical in September. I mean, either way, you're typical, but it's not addressing the population issue.
Paul?
The way I was listening to it earlier is that it depends on location in many cases in construction. I mean, some places get a lot of traffic during students, and some don't. And if I was going to do a broad brush of this site typical, I'd say, okay, what's typical during the year? And we have, you know, more time where the students are in and less time when the students are out. So I'd by doing that count during the, I'd interpret as count when the students are in.
Yeah, all I'm saying is that the language here is not specific enough. Like, you interpret it that way, and I might interpret it-
Oh, yeah.
... as typical during the summer.
But just notice that what the mayor said, he said 500 cars. He already had, I mean, the people who were coming to us knew what the traffic count was going to be. It wasn't withholdser, remember? He, you said, and so it's not, I mean, maybe some of the more new starts that are not well-prepared might not know it, but the, the people who have developments are going to know.
Right.
Okay. I guess, I guess I'm only looking at the language and saying, if I have to follow this, it allows me to think either of those times is typical, that's all. So all I'm saying is the language doesn't specify that it should be, you know.
The intention in working on this is to put some guidance, but not to lock it in so tight that a project would have to wait for a particular time of year, you know, before it could get underway. So I guess, you know, I should ask the service safety director, do you feel like this gives you adequate guidance about, you know, if, if there's a project that requires a traffic study, would you be able to make a judgment about what's typical in, in that area?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the difficult questions, because if you're, if you're dealing with East State Street, for example, if someone's going to put a development somewhere on, on East State Street, they, depending on what type of business it is, they may want traffic studies done on Fridays and Saturdays to determine what the peak traffic is, whereas if it's a development on Richland Avenue, you might be more interested in peak traffic loads at noon. So I, you know, I think this gives some flexibility in there, and yet the reference to the traffic manual gives it some substance, so that you have something upon which to reference wherever you decide.
Do you feel like this would be enough for you to rely on to say to a developer, for this project in this area, I think this is the time period you need to look at?
Yeah, more than likely, what I would do with a lot of the sections in here is support it with a specific policy. In some cases, you have to support it with a procedure, so that it's consistent, so that when somebody comes and asks you for, you know, what, what basis are you going to use to establish this traffic study, you not only have the guidance from the ordinance, you also establish a policy so that it's consistent.
Okay.
That was one of the main points the law director made to me in our discussions, was that the planning commission as a body has the ability to establish administrative policy based upon the recommendations of the administration in those cases, but they then will probably set up for this where there are questions or such, okay, what's, what's a policy that we can do for this?
Okay.
Would that change with each administration, then?
No, it would change with the planning commission, it would be adopted by the planning commission as an overall.
Would it, so it would be sort of written on a very simple bond, maybe?
Oh, yeah, because it's obvious, the mayor gets to appoint the planning commission, so, yeah.
No, I just, I just wondered if-
That could change.
So the people won't have, I mean, so people looking at it won't have any, well, I just wonder about what that means.
I think this is kind of one of the, the issues around the, the different roles. I mean, we set kind of the broad policy, you know, creating code, and then we have to rely on our administrators to work within that. Paul?
I'm assuming, the assumption on this is that somebody's going to say, okay, how is it going to affect my area or my street with this new development? And, and they're just, they're saying, okay, we need, we need a traffic study to determine this. I mean, some citizen could come up and say that. On the other hand, that any retail that's going probably has a good idea of what they expect to be coming in, and the apartment complex has some kind of idea of what kind of extra traffic would be generated already, and something would, at that point, would trigger in quite easily, I think. I mean...
Ojinka?
I was going to say, my original sense of this was that, that the traffic study was to kind of understand if the area and the current roads could support the increased traffic. Now, isn't that part of this, that, you know, I'm going to put a, you know, whatever?
Mm-hmm.
You know, so that, so that's all I'm saying, that if the intent of this is to say that small road, or whatever it is, could not support this new, whatever, popular restaurant or something, then the developer needs to do something. Okay? And so that's how I was reading this, as a developer. I say, well, you know, it's typical right now that 100 cars a day go there, and then my hotshot, you know, restaurant, you know, I'm doing the study based on what is rather than what will be.
Right.
Or is that not correct?
It's correct, but I think what you have to understand is that where are the B zones within the community? We're not talking about, you know, a large amount of area here, because when, if you really look at the zoning map, the problem areas that you're going to have are the B1s, which are supposed to be neighborhood-supported type businesses. But those are the ones that stick out, that sit on Schaefer Street across from Stuart McDonald and such, that sit in the middle of East State Street from the bakery down to Premier Video, up at the Hilltop, where you have the Fast Loop and the Dairy Queen and such that are B, is a B1. So those are your areas, you know, that are going to be impacted the most. Then you look at those and say, okay, Schaefer, because of where it is, would be the one that would be more likely to have the traffic study versus on East State Street or on-
Columbus Ave, where there's a lot of-
Well, Columbus, yeah, Columbus Road where, where the Dairy Queen is.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, as, as long as, you know, like, we all know that that's what this is for, say, can our current infrastructure support more traffic for this particular business? Isn't that what this is?
Mm-hmm.
And so we have to say, what, you know, what's typical currently, and what's the projection for the future, and will it, will the infrastructure be able to stand it, or is the road going to be like in so many subdivisions, you know, ripped up and junked up, and then we have to replace it?
Mm-hmm.
Or widened?
Right.
So, so I mean, I, I think that, as long as you feel this gives you the, you know, enough kind of support to protect the infrastructure, or increase it, or charge, or do whatever.
Okay. Paul?
This is a really asset tiered question. Is there actually a maximum of, let's say, a two-lane road on how many cars can go in an hour, 25 miles an hour? There's got to be a number. What is that number?
Yeah.
Do you know of any?
Don't know what that number is, but there is a, there is an engineering number.
It's got it written on his wrist.
Well, no, I mean, there's got to be a maximum.
It's like a traffic jam.
Well, no, or-
Stimson Avenue at between four and six.
Depends on how long it, how quickly you want to get there.
Going to add another 100 cars to an hour.
Right, right, exactly.
There is a point.
That's what I'm saying, that this is, this seems to me what the intent of this whole traffic thing was.
Right.
Can the road support it?
Yeah, the capability-
And I don't know if this just-
I think we've got enough here to say we want to look at this, but give some flexibility to the administration to figure out the right way to do that.
Okay.
Okay, then, the other things, there are a couple renumbering things, where I was just trying to fix the letters and numbers. On the last page, in E, this was supposed to be just about major changes, so we had to insert the word major in a place that it was missing, and then the appeals process. It's the same change that was, because this section is for changing site plans as opposed to proposing a new site plan, so going back and modifying, if, if it's a major change, there, the process is spelled out here.
Is major defined in here somewhere?
Yes.
Minor.
The service safety director may approve minor modifications if all of those three conditions are met.
Minor is?
Not major.
And so major is everything else.
Okay. Does it say all of them?
Yes, it says all of them, and then in E, it says a major change is any change that does not satisfy the above criteria for a minor change. So I think that we have addressed most of the concerns that have been raised, and I have to share with you, when I took this to the chamber's local government committee last Wednesday, and we went through these point by point, then I said, okay, here's what I, where I, I think we've got things worked in, and they said, okay. And I said, you're kidding, we're done? And they said, yeah. So I, I really think that we've taken a lot of input from different parts of the community and have addressed the concerns, and especially because we're making a commitment to go back and look at this in a year. If there are any major issues that come up, we'll, we'll have the chance to address those. So what I would intend to do with this is introduce this as a, and amend by substitution next Monday, which will take it back to first reading, and we can bring the $100 application fee ordinance through as its own ordinance, and that way they'll come through at the same time. Any other discussion or input?
Yeah, I'd like to say that we haven't really heard a lot from citizens who probably don't know this is going on, but I think that we can also pat ourselves on the back saying that now they will have an option in cases where there's not a council action on it, that they will be able to go in and see the plans and talk to the planning commission about such things as, let's say, the Palmer Place development, where people on Oak Street were very concerned and expressed to me several times, what's going to happen on my street, and will it be open? We barely have enough place, you know, and so they can go in and actually make the issues known. The people who live on streets often know much more about them, or the people who work on them know much more about them than we do individually or jointly. So I think it's, it's an important point that we talk about those people who will have an option and opportunity to talk, and that's what this is all about. And we have made, finally gotten to that point. We spent many hours on it.
Yeah. Well, we did have folks from the neighborhood associations at our work session when we went through this, so I think we have had some of that input as well. And a couple people have asked during this process, how is this different than the administrative review that happens now? And I think a key difference is it brings it into the sunshine for a public meeting with the planning commission. So people do have a chance to see the plans and, you know, raise any issues, and I really believe that when people have a chance to do some problem solving, we can come up with results that work better for everyone.
And the plans will be in the library, and that's an important thing.
It says so in here.
Yeah, it says so in here, and we want to see that. I mean, that's where, that's where citizens have a right to have some control over their neighborhoods.
Yep. Anything else on this?
Just a quick question. One of the concerns that was raised by a citizen at one of the meetings we had was a request for a new zoning map so we could see where B1s and R1s intersect in particular.
Yeah. I don't think we have that yet.
So is that something that's coming together soon on which?
A zoning-
The new zoning map?
New officials on it.
Uh, yes, it's, we have a couple areas of the city that we're working on with Hill Guard, down on Stimson Avenue and in the near area here, but it's, it's close to being done. And you've got my file of the, all the buildings under, over 10, under 10,000.
Yep.
But isn't what he's asking for, Gary, Larry Payne, actually, now he's probably happy because he has his $5,000 threshold, but when he didn't have it, he was saying, go look at all those B1s and see where they butt up against, that's going to be our problem area. Now that he has his 5,000 threshold, I don't think he could, you know, it didn't seem like it came back. But we can look at the, you know, the B1s and the ones the mayor just, you know, if you had your map going in your head, you could see all those places where we do have the B1 zones, like your, your flower shop down the street, and Frank's bait shop, and, yeah, I'm going to forget them, Dairy Queen. And those are places where theoretically this could be a problem, but it was sort of a either or, wasn't it?
No, because it, it, now I'm exempted if I do something under 5,000 square feet, but if I go to 8,500 square feet, I'm still abutting an R1 zone, so I'm exempted. So I'm kicked out of here.
No, no, what do you mean, you're exempted?
Exempt means you don't have to do-
I don't have to do, I don't have to go through this review.
If you do.
If you're under 5,000.
If you're under 5,000.
If you're under 5,000, but if you were tearing that down and then building something over 5,000 because you abut an R1, actually just building anything new, you would. If you would do a remodel over 25 percent and you abut an R1, you have to go through the process. That's the way I read it.
Let's make sure it's clear.
I thought you only had to-
If you look at the exemptions-
A little confusing, first time you, few times you read them.
Yeah. It's confusing every time you read it.
So 1 and 2 family residential, 1 and 2 family residential accessory buildings, new construction, less than 5,000 square feet for commercial or industrial, and then in the expansions or change of use.
There's an or in that, but not in the, I, okay, I see what the or is.
Okay.
It's good.
So the map will still be really useful.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anything else on site plan review? So I will bring this forward as an amendment next week. We have a request for a revocable license for use of the right-of-way from the summit at Coates Run. Does everyone have this? I have a few, I do have copies. Do people have this?
Yes.
Okay. So there are some extra copies.
You have one?
Oh, I have one, I have one for Delia.
Okay.
Oh, that.
Yeah, there's extra ones for people, other folks here, if you want to come and get one.
Delia, did you want a copy of the?
Yeah.
It's up here.
Wander on out.
So Edwards Communities is requesting a revocable license to use the right-of-way to build a bridge across Coates Run that would, a corner of the bridge abutment would be in the city right-of-way on Richland Avenue. My understanding is that they have another option, if, if the city doesn't want to do this, of going through a state permitting process to move Coates Run, so that they can build the whole bridge on their property without encroaching on the right-of-way. I'm not sure that a revocable license for use of the right-of-way is the- I'm not sure that a revocable license for use of the right-of-way is the thing that they really want to be asking us for. I wonder if they would just rather be asking us for an easement, allowing them to use the right-of-way for this structure, because our revocable licenses come up for review every 10 years.
Or could we revoke?
Or it could be revoked, at which point, I don't, so that, I think, and I did hear from Mr. Kirk today, and I think they would prefer to have an easement that would allow that bridge to exist in the right-of-way without having to go through the permitting process for a revocable license every 10 years. I don't know, Mayor or Ray, if, if they have their permit to move the creek, or if this is just something they would attempt if they don't receive this.
It's, it's in process now. It's a matter of, he's filed for a revocable license with the city, and they filed for a 404 permit with ODNR. And in a sense, whichever one comes first is the one that they'll do. I think a revocable license or easement's probably the best for the city, because that avoids any direct impact on, on Coates Run.
Do we have a copy of the 404 permit application?
No, I don't.
Could we get it?
Probably.
Okay, that would be helpful. My basic starting point, and I've told them already to restream me because I'm in a terrible mood.
Relax.
Yeah, relax. Okay, I have several friends who are in this vicinity, who are going to be at least theoretically affected. And I asked them in the last couple of weeks, well, have you heard anything from Edwards Community? It seems to be moving along. And they said, no, they hadn't heard anything from them. And yet we have letters dated the 22nd of June, 2007. And these are people who, if they move, I mean, I look at the picture and I think, gee, where's Purple Chopsticks going to go? And how about Will Chandler? And how about some of these other buildings that are along there that are going to be potentially impacted? I mean, you know, the, this is the floodway, right? I remember I gave a student a B instead of an A because he didn't figure out it was in the floodway, this opening. And, I mean, how can we do the, how can we do this, the flood, how can we adjust the floodplain like this without saying it's going to have an impact on those adjacent property owners? Actually, you know, so I guess I have two questions, at least, maybe more. But one of them is, have we really, have these people any awareness? The last time I talked to the two people, at least, that I know very well, they said they haven't heard word one from Edwards, ever. And so these letters are, I don't know, they aren't very meaningful to us. And the second thing, to me, anyway, and the second thing is, I think that you say there would be no consequence, but it's a floodway. And if you put something in the floodway that changes the flow, I mean, this is a floodway we've had trouble with. What happens if a brush pile or something like that comes in and blocks the bridge they're putting in, the culvert? What happens to the people that have property there? What guarantees can we, can we give them, help them? I mean, help me to understand how this is going to not have any impact. Coates Run has been a heck of a, I mean, the water gets up to McDonald's driveway. Not this year, we haven't had any water, but many years. So what's going to go on, Ray?
Well, basically, what they're talking about with the revocable license is to build a bridge from existing bank to bank without actually putting anything down into Coates Run.
The bank can be eroded, and so.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be a part of river process. Now, you've made it stable, and you've put a top on it. I mean, I assume it has a top on it, right? So all of a sudden, it's an aperture that can be blocked. So how can we say there won't be an impact?
Well, you know, I'm not an engineer.
Well, I'm not an engineer either, but I'm just saying, commonsensically, if you have an opening like this, instead of an opening like that, you're going to have some issues. I mean, it's just my old physics from high school, 100 years ago.
But they're, the point of the revocable license, though, is that they're not going to change the configuration of the stream. Now, if they get the ODNR permit, yes, they will change the configuration of the stream, they'll change the contour of the bank, there'll be a lot of other changes that will go into that.
Making, but changing the stream, since a stream is a living entity, I mean, it goes and comes, it can erode. But now we have a concrete side and bottom, and we have a top on it. So you have changed it.
But they're not going to put, not necessarily going to put abutments. I don't remember the design of this particular bridge, but my understanding was that it was going to go beyond the existing stream.
It's hard to, you know, I'm, given my experience with the friends, I, I mean, the drawing, isn't there a drawing in here that has it?
There's two drawings, and neither one's highlighted, it says.
So, you know, it's hard for us to tell, just like it's hard to tell if they really talked to these people or not.
And then next, right next to this, right next to this bridge, of course, is our bridge over Coates Run, that carries Richland Avenue. So those two bridges would be in close proximity to one another.
And the people downstream have been affected by our bridge at times when there's been brush in it, haven't they? Maybe not recently, because they haven't any water. I mean, I just, I guess, wonder, it's not such an easy thing to, to think about, especially since the people that are probably going to be affected haven't really, I don't think, been notified. The people who have property in that area who have rights, as much as Mr. Edwards has.
And I don't know what the process is for the 404 permit. I've not been involved in that before. I don't know what notification they're required to make. I honestly don't now.
Can we ask Mr. Kirk for a copy of the documents that have been filed? Or go to, what, EPA?
No, who would?
Process ODNR?
Yeah. We have to see the 404 application.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it would behoove us, I mean, since citizens have had virtually no input, I mean, they can come and talk to you, but their elected reps haven't had any input on this.
Well, the thing is, if it goes through ODNR or whatever, and the decision on what configuration that bridge will be, will be theirs. It will be ours.
It probably would be less expensive to leave the stream where it is. So I'm inclined to think that if we take a look at that, there still would be an opportunity for us to consider this. Jim?
I was just going to say, but that seems to be the strength of letting the ODNR request go through. These are Ohio Department of Natural Resources, anybody involved is going to be familiar with the effect on streams when X, Y, or Z happens, when you put a bridge across it, whatever, more so than we are. Nancy's correct. Putting the bridge over, whether you mess with the stream bed or not, is going to affect the stream at some point in the year. And I don't think we know enough as council members to, to make that decision, to, to deal with that stream of water. There's a bridge over the, for the access, going to Carriage Hill. Any other problems there? It doesn't, I, I have not been down in there, I don't want to rework the, the stream bed down there, but it, it does get blocked up, because there are a lot of trees and brush along that area. We've talked about cleaning it up, but that's difficult, too.
And this is a 100-year project. I mean, the project will be there for 40 years, we can clean it up today, but what will it be like in 10 years? Somebody doesn't stay on top of it.
Did anyone else wish to speak to us about this?
Close the Army Corps.
Do you have a highlight version of this with the coloration, or are you working out the setting I have?
There is one copy here that has a couple of color drawings.
Ooh, nice. There you go, Paulie. Blue for water.
Well, no, that, okay, they said someplace it's yellow for the change. Okay, so this is what we're looking at right here.
That's where they would, I think the highlight is where the stream is now.
Highlighted in yellow is the present location of the stream compared to the dark outline of Culver and the relocated stream. Okay, I just want to figure out what they're talking about here.
What's going to, this representation here is not, is not realistic at all, because this shows two buildings. Is that, this is not really.
Rendering.
A current rendering of this proposed development.
No, no.
So what's it in here?
It's pretty.
It's kind of a, a pretty visual. Okay, but it doesn't really show what's actually being built here. This is, I just want to note that.
It does, it shows the road crossing the bridge, that it shows the bridge.
Oh, where's the bridge? On this, this thing right here?
Right below that tree.
Oh, below, but I'm, I'm looking at this one.
Oh, that's, it's that.
Pretend. If that's the pretend.
Just a pretend picture.
Okay. I, I don't know what the current status of that 404 permit application is and how long they take to process. I think if this, if we think that it's better to allow them to use the right-of-way, we probably need to draft something about an easement rather than a revocable license. But I guess it sounds like Nancy, at least, would like to see the 404 permit application.
And I think the people that live in that area should have, I mean, the people who have been fighting this project don't live in the area. People who own property and have businesses should know what the options are and help, give us some guidance. The one place we have a decision-making point, we should have some input from people who see it, who live with it every day, or who want to sell their property to Coates Run, one of those, who knows what.
Do you have any indication of, like, the timeline on this project? I mean, do we have time to, to ask to look at this? Where do things stand?
Basically, at this point, the zoning certificate's been issued, that it's an appropriate use for the site. The land development permit is still sitting there waiting for some final review by our engineers and some corrections from their engineers. But it's down to, they're talking decimal points on HEC-RASM, HEC-RAD models or whatever, which I don't totally understand, but.
They don't either.
But that's basically where it's at. And once that's completed, then we go to the next step of, what are they, what are they doing with the dirt?
So we have time.
Yeah.
Are the plans for this available, if people want to look at them?
Oh, yeah.
In your office?
Yeah.
Okay, because there's a drawing that's up on the council table, and it's just a single drawing.
Right. Yeah, that, that was the, the revised building footprint when they eliminated a couple of accessory structures.
Paul?
Do they have more drawings of the proposed change, bridge change here?
Of the bridge?
Use of the right-of-way.
I, I don't have detailed drawings on the bridge.
Okay. I'm just wondering, because it looks like it's taking a sharp turn and.
The stream?
Yeah, the stream.
Yeah.
So I assume they have some kind of design, so when it takes that sharp turn, it just doesn't run right into the bank and scour it out or something?
Right. Yeah, that's the, that's the revised stream design where they, where they move Coates Run.
Oh, this is the present one? This, this.
I don't know which one you're looking at, but.
There's only one drawing. Yellow in it.
The yellow is the current stream, and the drawing is where the bridge would be if they get the 401 for, or the 404 permit.
Okay, and the, the other exhibit, culvert exhibit is the one that they propose to use the right-of-way on. Is that what I'm standing here?
I mean, this is really important. We have hundreds of cars going across this bridge, perhaps our own buses. And, you know, this is the only decision point we have. I'd like to see the 404 plan so we know, so we know, from our point of view, as limited as it is as people who make decisions on political basis, what, what the options are. And I don't think we have it right now. And I'd like to ask you to get a 404 plan before we consider it again.
Think you can get that for us?
I'll ask for it.
For our next committee meeting?
I'll ask for it. You know, and if, if they don't want to give it to us, then we can ask.
If they filed it, it's a public document.
Right. So see if you can get it from ODNR.
And better, and better plans for the bridge, so we can ask, I mean, I intend to go along and ask the people I know, that live, that have businesses there, what they think. I mean, it's, it's pretty serious, because they're down at the stream level, and all the water might be running down that road, and I think there could be some issues. And I'd like to do it right. At least, whatever part I have to do right, I'd like to do right.
Okay? So we'll, we'll try and look at that. And then I do have one miscellaneous item that Ray handed to me this evening, which is another use-of-right-of-way request. And I have some extra copies of this, if anyone wants them. This is on Columbus Road. It's an application from Jack Alvis for a revocable license to allow a portion of a new parking area to encroach 15 feet into our rather wide right-of-way out there. And there is a drawing, the third page in, which shows the proposed parking area. It shows the pump station, the water pump station that we're locating there, and it shows where Columbus Road currently is. So it's, what distance from the roadway itself, would you say?
About 60 feet. Well, 60 feet less half of the pavement, because it's 60 feet from the center line.
Okay.
Is the road on this side or that side? Up there.
Yep. What do people think?
Once again, is a revocable license the ideal thing for this?
Well, the parking lot.
Parking would be easy enough to revoke if we needed our right-of-way, I think.
If we put in there that they would give it up, I don't see why we'd have to ask them to come back every 10 years.
Jim?
No, I think it's fine. I'm just trying to look on the map here. Didn't we grant the use of the right-of-way to the developer of the current Holzer Clinic, a revocable license? Either parking or a sign or something, but because the.
Probably a sign. I don't remember.
Because the right-of-way is so wide there, we recognize that it could be done. Oh, his required landscaping could be in, in the right-of-way, I don't guess where. But I, I think this would be a reasonable request to grant.
And this sketch, I'm assuming that whatever landscaping there is will be reviewed by the tree commission?
Yes.
This is, looks like a pretty early sketch of that. Okay. Anybody else?
No, I'm missed.
Okay. So we can go, go ahead and have this up next week? Okay. Oh, Jake, do you have a miscellaneous item?
Yeah, I just have a question. I believe that I read, or know, that the university is building a road to the New Baker Center. And I was just curious, who, do we have any role in, how does that get submitted and approved?
So far, it's not submitted and approved.
Okay. But once they submit it, is there a traffic study or something? Is there anything that?
It'll be part of our Richland Avenue corridor study that we're, we're doing now, or we're starting into at this point. Because we're concerned about the pedestrian issues there and, you know, and what, what kind of traffic would or wouldn't go in and out of, an entrance or an exit? You know, and what's the most appropriate use of access there?
And who's doing the study, and when will it be done?
It's part of our Richland Avenue study.
Does it have gazebo? Does it have gazebo in it?
Gazebo's.
Well, the university's Richland Avenue study had gazebo's in it. No, ours is more utilitarian, we're worried about pedestrians.
Yeah.
Well, when you say ours, I mean, is it done in-house, or do you have a consultant?
No, we're, we're in the, what we have now is we have grants to do the Richland Avenue 682 intersection, the bridge over the Hawking, Richland Avenue. And as part of the scope of that, we've included a review of the, the Richland Avenue corridor all the way through, basically through President's Street, to try to look at that in terms of pedestrian issues, because we all know that there's huge pedestrian issues there and what, and what we need to do with that, that whole area.
Yeah.
How that all ties together, you know, we haven't resolved that yet. That's part of the, what we're, we have a, a committee made up of citizens and representative from the university, and representative. from the university, and representative from council.
Student senate.
Student senate.
Who's doing the study, did you say?
So, this committee is doing the study?
No.
No, they're advising.
They're advising, okay, so my question is like-
In the selection of-
Yeah.
The study will be done-
Some engineer, who is it?
By the engineering firm, yeah.
Okay.
And you've chosen them already?
Yes.
Who is the engineering firm?
It'll be Burgess and Niple.
Okay.
Okay.
And because we would be funding it, we would be funding the signage potentially and things like that, that would be the point at which we would have some input? I mean, if you have to put a stop sign, for example, on Richland Avenue Bridge?
Yes.
You know, I mean, that's certainly not something, I mean, people have said that all along, how can they possibly, unless it's only one way in, how can we possibly have an entrance there without a stop sign?
Oh, okay.
With the grade that's there? Okay, will you, will you and Amy promise me that you look at this crossing to the West Green, there are more students now, the mass transit system, that is, the elevators, take them right down and they go right across? I can tell you from walking over there for noon classes, the last five years, it's a much more, not this year, but last years, a much more well-trafficked area. I mean, it is, there's a definite increase, and I would like to not have anybody else hurt.
Yeah, we're, we're planning on a series of committee and/or public meetings to go through this design process and through the study process. We haven't announced the first meeting yet because Andy's been gone last week and this week, and when he gets back, we'll determine when we'll have the first committee meeting, and then that'll lead into our first general public meeting to talk about the scope of the project and what we should or shouldn't include in it.
I just have one follow-up. So, any decision, in other words, on a new road, access road to Baker Center, would be made after this study?
Well, depends on, depends on whether you talk-
I want to hear on the record what the answer is.
Honestly, depends on whether you talk to the city or the university.
Well, we know the answer then.
Well, I know. Yes, but who, and so my question is, who does approve it? In other words-
Service safety director.
Okay.
But all we approve is a curb cut.
The curb cut.
Yeah.
But that's basically approving the road.
Mm-hmm.
I mean-
It's a private road.
It's a private road.
And the signage?
But, but the decision to do, you know, the no, the go, no-go rests with you. Okay, and that could be made, if I'm understanding you correctly, as prior to this traffic study of Richland Avenue? Is that correct?
I mean, that's entirely possible, but that's not our intent.
It's not our intent.
You're tearing down Anderson Hall, but Janka, it's gonna be there.
I know, I know that. I'm trying to understand what everyone's understanding of it is, right? So, in other words, you could approve it earlier.
Yeah, but whether it's going to be an in and out, or it's going to be an entrance only, or an exit only, there are a lot of, there are a lot of parameters that can be put onto a curb cut or an access to public, to the public way, that involves safety and that involve good design, and our engineers will be involved in the good design side, and we'll be looking at the safety side, and it may be that traffic going in and out of any point on, in that area is going to be bad, so.
Well, I appreciate this, because we kind of, we said, oh, we're going to study it first, but the reality is, that may not be true. We may not study it first, we may make the decision first.
The final form should be studied. I mean, the final, the final way in which it actually functions and how it's going to be signed or signaled or configured-
But it's, the fact that it exists will be made prior to the end of the study. Just for the clear.
Could you ask, how wide the right-of-way is there? How wide's the right-of-way in, on Richland Avenue? How wide is our right-of-way?
I'm trying to remember, that's an ODOT right-of-way from where it was, 33, I think that's 60 feet.
Well, they have a big retaining wall there and, or how are they going? I mean, when you talk about good design, good design, this area, I mean, you know, it's going to be good design of a, of an idea that somebody had, right? I mean, it's not going to be something that most of us would have picked out and said, oh, that's fabulous, let's do it, it'll make such a great-looking road. Right? Well, yeah, that's my opinion, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, there, there's some elevation issues that we're going to have to deal with.
Paul. Paul's been waiting for a minute to get into this.
Now, go ahead, so you can finish, don't worry about it.
We're just, no.
Okay. How much is this study costing?
We're waiting for, for-
It's, it's the first item under miscellaneous of the finance committee.
Oh, okay.
So, we can talk about it in the morning.
I don't have the final dollars, but it'll be somewhere between $300,000 and $500,000. And that includes the design of the road, that would be-
No, that's the total engineering cost.
That's total engineering cost.
Okay. Design of Richland Avenue?
No, engineering cost for either redecking or a replacement of some nature for the Richland Avenue Bridge-
Which one?
Over the Hawking, and for whatever type of intersection changes result from the Richland 682. I mean, altogether, we're talking probably a $5 million project here, just from the bridge through the intersection.
The, the bridge that's over the Hawking through the intersection?
The bridge that's over the Hawking.
But this is not the bridge over the Hawking, this is the bridge over the, uh-
Riverbed.
But it's being included in the traffic.
The old Hawking.
So-
Riverbed.
Okay, so, they did a six, they built a $65 million building and they didn't look at any of this while they were putting this new-
Their, their intent all along has been to put some kind of an entrance in there.
Or exit, they weren't sure.
Or exit or whatever.
They're not sure which it is, right, at this point.
Yeah.
Okay. I have one miscellaneous too.
Okay.
Um, what's the status of your comprehensive plan advisory board? Have you got members yet?
I think we have some new applications, at least some people have requested them.
Okay.
I'll, I'll check with the clerk after the meeting to see if we have enough to form it. I'm not sure if we're there yet, but I, I have had two other requests for application forms. So, we're making progress.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up, because I hear a lot of people saying we should be doing more planning and nobody seems to want to join.
Yeah. Yep, so, yeah, anybody out there who wants to help with the comprehensive plan, with developing benchmarking and help hold us all accountable on implementation, we can use more help on that commission. So, if any, if no one else has miscellaneous items, we're adjourned.
At this time, we'll open the finance and personnel committee. If you look at your agenda, it just says miscellaneous, because we have several issues that have arisen in the past few days, and the mayor has several that I haven't even had a chance to discuss with him. So, actually, my first one is a request from the mayor with regards to sidewalks that we, that we authorized to be built along Stewart Street this summer. The estimate to build those was $25,000. There was $25,000 in street's capital fund, and we agreed to use that. Because of several issues, a couple landlord, landowners built their own section of the sidewalk, we got a really good deal from the contractor because he was doing some work in that area, the city's expenses were only $7,000.
Right.
The mayor would like our permission to put that additional $18,000 back into street capital, into the capital line, so that it could be used for other issues. I think that sounds good, is, is the reflection.
Yes.
Otherwise, otherwise it would be required to just stay there until the end of the year, here, so. So, the, as I understand it, the sidewalks have been built and bills paid and-
They look good.
All right, just, I, I think the discussion I had with the deputy auditor was one that since a line item of $25,000 was created in 580, and we only charged $7,000 against it, I wanted it treated just like anything else in 580, where I could move that money back into the unappropriated, from the, to be assigned to other proj, rather than come back to council and say, oh, give me additional funds all the time. Although I've had enough, number of other requests from department heads that mean additional funds anyway. But it was sort of clarifying that whenever we have a project where I have to come to council for authority to do, otherwise it costs more than $25,000. That if we complete the project and we do it under the $25,000, any, whatever that amount left is, we can use for another capital item that I might not have had to come back and ask for authority. I always have to ask for any authority to spend anything over $25,000, and even once you establish that, I can't spend over that authorized amount unless I come back to you and get it changed.
If there's any extra money, I'd like to make a plug for a sidewalk between Blick and Blue Line. I had somebody calling me on that.
Oh, it's my stack of requests, there's, how much extra do you want to appropriate?
Actually, I, that whole West Union area, the sidewalks need attention. I was looking at them about a month ago myself. The mayor has some other miscellaneous that he wanted to bring up at this point.
Sure, I'll try to go through them. First of them is funding for this engineering study for those projects, as we pretty fully discussed. Really, the amount to appropriate this year probably only needs to be what we're going to spend this year, but I'm sure that the engineering firm will want to know what, you know, total contracts are, and we don't have the ordinance, I can't author, you know, sign a purchase order, and they may not start until then. So, we're probably, you know, I, I know that they're probably not going to spend more than about $100,000 or so this year, calendar year, but the overall project probably is going to be in the $500,000 range at minimum. To take it all the way through final design engineering, and this is what we have the tax for, is to the, the funds that do the street rebuild, this is a rebuild of the intersection and a rebuild of the ridge, and there are funds available in it. I think the last report I saw was a little over $500,000 that was available.
I have a question about the, the traffic study part of this that was, that folks were just discussing. Is part of the intention of the study to look at whether it's a good idea and whether it's safe to add a curb cut in the area, or is this just engineering on the assumption that this is something that's going to happen, so how should we do it? I mean, I really want to know-
It's both.
What the, what the recommendation is about whether it's a good thing to do.
The first stage of it, according to the award by ODOT for the bridge, was to do a feasibility study of the area, to see how it would, would work along with the intersection change. So, we, since we're paying this 100%, ODOT really doesn't care what we, you know, have to, want to spend that money on. If we want to expand the scope, and we already have, because we recognize it as a total, you know, situation, rather than just looking at, because what they did was a traffic study by BNN of the intersection, because it was rated one of the more dangerous ones within their district that particular year. It's about the third study done on it, then we got awarded those funds. Meanwhile, condition rating went down far enough, we could go after the bridge funds. They've given us a conditional on that based upon their review of the scope of, scope of work in the preliminary design. Hopefully, that will be submitted to them early in '08, would be my guess at this stage, because by the time they get started on it and everything, that's probably the earliest it could happen.
But, I would shoot, Debbie, I think, was asking about further up the hill, in particular-
Right now, I think in our request for services, we said to, from Richland Congress intersection, I thought, was it Richland Congress, or was it the old Richland Bridge? I don't remember.
It's, basically, it's all the way up through to President Street, that whole Richland corridor, that's part of the, this-
From Port or from Congress?
Yeah, basically, it's from President Street, you know, which would-
I, I think what we're asking is, is the decision about the curb cut going to be made after the engineering study?
That's our plan.
Your plan? So, is that a yes?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not going to be mayor when the decision's made, so I don't know.
Oh, that's right, that's right. So, the study will take place, you know, traffic, safety, all these things, and then a decision about the curb cut after this engineering study will be made. Is that, is that correct?
In, in a perfect world, that's the way it'll happen, and if it, if it happens the way we would like to see it, no. If that'll happen, if it happens the way we intend for it to happen, the decision on where that access will be and if it will be, will be determined by the outcome of the study.
Okay, isn't that something, though, if we're paying for this study, and we're having a scope of work, and we're saying, this is what we'd like you to do, engineers, isn't that within our control, we say, we're basing our decision on this professional work done by this engineer?
I mean, even the overall plan at the university level for what they are going to do, is my understanding, is first, they're tearing down Anderson Hall. Have they got that done yet? Have they even contracted out for it yet?
They closed the parking lot.
Yeah, I know they've done that.
In about two and a half, in about two years, two, two to two and a half years is when they would build this road, if-
Yeah, because I was thinking, why pay the engineers to study it if we've already decided to do it? I mean, you know, let's just-
We haven't decided to do it.
No, I know, well, I'm not sure.
But even if, even if they decided to do it, we have to control it. I mean, we can't just let them build it however they want it and, and put up whatever signs they want to put up.
Well, maybe they shouldn't pay some of the engineering studies. I, I mean, I'm just saying, it sounds like we're paying, you know, what, $500,000 to study something that maybe we don't need certain aspects of that study if the decision is being made. That's all.
Could, could you also tell me why, as long, I still feel, I feel that there's an unanswered question, why would we start a President Street? We're not redesigning Richland Bridge that's over the, over the scar. Can we reduce our costs and just go from the end of the Richland Avenue Bridge down to the other, where the traffic problems are?
My thought is, with the bridge abutments that you have, there are railings, you got a line-of-sight problem, potentially.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's what we've been talking about, we're just-
So, that's why I wanted to include, didn't go up to, up to President Street.
But it's just like, but it's a lot of extra money to go up to Pres, I mean, what can you do with the bridge?
Not really, I mean-
Well, I mean, what, it seems, to what it seems like, I guess that we all have the same question, and what we have is a redo of the Richland area bridge over the Hawking River. We have a redo of that intersection, but all of a sudden, it's way up the street now, and we are talking about something much more comprehensive. And it doesn't seem to me that those two things are at all entwined. The bridge has to be repaired, because the decking needs to be repaired. The Richland Avenue thing is going to be there no matter what, so-
But the question also, Nancy, is not just the redecking of it, but it's four-lane bridge, there's a high number of left-hand turns, it becomes a one lane, should it be a six-lane bridge?
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's, that's a real question, what's the volume of traffic coming down 682 from the bypass, especially in, in the mornings, et cetera? So, that's what we really wanted to look at, and you got to get a feel for what is the to, where's all this traffic coming from? You know, is it all ending at Peden Stadium parking lots, because everybody then makes a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn as you're coming into work, and a left when you're, where you're going out? And so, our thought, I mean, our, we can give you a copy of the request for proposal that we asked for, and we're more than happy for you to, you know, take a look at that. I got, we got 16 different engineering firms that've been on it, or, you know, that's why we had the committee look over everything and have the committee and everything for that, is that, and a committee's come forward, and it was giving us the recommendation, and my next step really is, is to ask you for some money so we can hire the engineering firm.
And the engineering study is broken into six segments, and if at some point during the preliminary and feasibility, we decide that they're asking for too much money for whichever segments, then we have to make a decision, do we want to pay for that or not? I mean-
Look, it seemed to me that there was an earlier issue with this bridge and with bridge issues, and that was one thing we were addressing with this. And it seems like you've combined two things, and I think that's what you're hearing from us. Why are these two things brought together?
Well, what we're trying to do is, is approach that portion of the city and the community as, as a problem area, okay, which we all know that Richland Avenue was a problem area for the city in terms of pedestrians and traffic. We've got bridge problems, we've got intersection problems. What we're trying to do is try to approach it in a more comprehensive fashion, rather than just bit, and bit by bit and piece by piece, and, and attack little segments of it. We're trying to approach it and say, okay, maybe we can't do all of this in the next two years, but here's what would make sense for us to work towards as an objective, to solve the pedestrian problems, to simplify some of the vehicular problems that we have. What should at some point be done with the Schaefer Street, Richland Avenue intersection? We're not planning to redesign that right now.
It works reasonably well, except it's crowded.
But there could be some changes made to that. That ties into how the bridge should be changed, which ties into the intersection. They all impact on one another. It's a series of dominos. And we want to look at the dominos, not just one.
Well, we have the domino, but then we have the explosion with this new addition into what is a relatively reasonably functioning, maybe not perfect, road area. And that's, I guess, why we're asking.
Well, we can drop that and see what the price goes down to and not study it.
I'm just trying to figure out why it's going from President Street down to here and a few other things.
I think for me, I just want to know that the study is going to inform the decision-making process, that it's not going to be a process to, you know, engineer how the curb cut's going to happen, that it's going to be a process to determine whether the curb cut should happen. Because I feel like some of the problems that we are dealing with in that corridor are things that have happened with no knowledge or involvement of the city. If you look at the little bricks that were made to go across the street that looked like a crosswalk that weren't supposed to really be a crosswalk, we then had to cope with that and deal with the fact that many pedestrians started using that. If you look at the line of sight issues with the gazebo-type thing that sticks out from Bentley that makes it really hard for people to see the traffic coming around the corner, that was a decision that the university made that I think has impacted pedestrian safety. And now, we have to figure out how to deal with it. So, if we're doing... I think doing a study is a good idea, but I want our decisions to be based on, you know, recommendations coming from the study, not just trying to cope with something that we don't really have control over.
Yeah, I think we're trying to make the process of going through the design phase of this process very transparent, for lack of a better description. We're trying to involve citizens in this initial committee. We involve representatives from the community in the engineering selection process. And we're also going to involve them in the discussion about what is included and not included. I mean, you know, it's... Because it goes far beyond just fixing some holes in the bridge and fixing the traffic light at the intersection.
I have a few questions. So, it's going to go and look at the Bentley curve, Bentley Hall Annex curve, right? So, if the recommendation says tear down the gazebo, we'll actually look at it like that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's a recommendation.
Maybe on the right of way, but it's a joint task force, right? We could give them a revocable license.
I have other questions. The age of the bridge. We're going to be doing an engineering study on the upper Richland Avenue Bridge, the old one. How far is that going to survive? I mean, are we going to...
It's around 1933.
Is it... Are we designing a plan around something that's about to fall down or something like that?
Well, we're going to have to cross that area at some... I mean, the real problem happened in the early 60s, late 50s when the university decided to build the West Green going through Route 50 and Route 33 at that time. I mean, that's reality. But we don't necessarily would have to have a bridge there. We could be like what the university did under Baker, the New Baker Center. We could build a culvert and put a lot of dirt in there and just have road... Run the road across.
Okay. Should they be assessed for any of the design?
They don't like that plan when I mention it. I said, "That's the cheapest way for the city to do it."
Should they be assessed for any of the design? So, is this going to impact them?
Pardon?
Should they be assessed for any of this design cost since it's part of their... They're part of the process here?
As we go through the process, they may become involved in the funding.
Okay. Is... The other question, I know they have a pseudo-road that's going underneath the bridge right now. Is that... We have a storm sewer going under there, a sanitary sewer? Can that take the traffic?
Under the...
Under the old bridge?
Oh, the old bridge.
Between Life Science Building and the Student Center. There's no... What?
Yeah, the relief store.
We haven't paid for it yet.
Well, they're using it as a road right now, it's not paved, so... Okay, I just had those questions. So, we're going to go all the way up to the Bentley turn and look at that as a problem or potential?
I'm a little concerned that we're going to get a permutation of that earlier proposal that we had to let the sort of... Let take out those lanes of traffic and give them the island and the one that we turned down.
As a hall?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think that... Well, you weren't here, Ray. We'll talk to you afterwards about it. We think we've seen this before in a different guise.
Just to reiterate what Debbie said, you know, the idea... I like the idea of studying the whole strip of Richland because I think, you know, having a six-lane bridge and feeding into a one lane, you know, isn't very useful. So, I think that whole corridor study is really important. And I just want to say that, you know, I think we all would look forward to seeing the study or having you see the study before any decisions are made about, you know, what to do there, curb cuts, et cetera, et cetera.
If possible, could we see the breakdown? You said there's six segments to it? So, just to see when it gets too expensive, we know what portions you'd be thinking about meeting, I guess?
The other problem is, we've been talking about Bentley Hall and crossing that street for at least five years and there's still nothing there. Is there any way we can do something temporarily to solve the problem? Have we taken Andy out there? We've talked and talked and talked and nothing has happened. I mean, someday, somebody's going to get killed on that area.
We can change the line of sight for the pedestrians and vehicles pretty quickly. We can carry the traffic to the left side as it approaches President Street, make President Street one lane on the left-hand side, put bus stops and parking on the right-hand side. And you force the traffic to the left as it comes around Bentley, which draws a... Maximizes whatever line of sight they get there.
And it just creates a huge problem for anybody using the street. Why don't you just consider? I mean, just a small thing like slowing down the traffic coming up the hill. That's where the problem is. That people... I mean, we've talked about this before.
Yeah, I thought, Dave, one of the discussions was just putting handrails on the park on the sidewalks so nobody just cuts right across.
Because people just go across like a bunch of cockroaches both ways. And, you know, and it's... I think you've still got the same problem. I mean, I want to see... I would like to see the Bentley problem solved before I go off council or die. And it just seems like it's never going to happen. I mean, it's a safety problem. And we know it.
Yes.
And don't talk about, you know, narrowing the road because the people who go uptown are going to go uptown less. Talk about solving the problem with a way to control the traffic speed going up the hill and something creative.
And a pedestrian flow.
Stop signs?
I don't know. I mean, but, you know, just cutting down the amount of road space and parking uptown, I don't think will kind of...
Isn't this what we're going to pay this engineering firm to do?
Well, they'll come back and guess what they want to hear.
We'll just think of some interesting solution.
But Nancy's asking for a quicker solution.
Yeah, something before I die.
Even if it's temporary.
The next eight months.
But we need to talk about that with City Services.
Transportation.
We need to go on. So, we're going to have an ordinance on the agenda to look at funding for the remainder of 2007. Is that what I'm hearing? Or we're not talking about 2008, just what's remaining in 2007?
We can do it that way, yes. But I think that the authority part of it probably has to be more realistic of all six steps so that the engineering firm knows that there's a commitment to do it.
Okay, so we'll talk about all six of them on Monday?
As soon as... Well, if I get that information from the engineers.
Or what we know?
The firm. If I don't, then I, you know, can't ask you for the specifics.
Whenever it is, okay. Okay, second miscellaneous.
I don't know if I want to do another one. Okay, I've got this. I need an ordinance authorizing us to dispose of some auction items. There's about 12 or 13 of them that we've estimated the value was... Could possibly at auction go over $1,000. Some of these are impound vehicles that we have received through the police department. Some of them are our own vehicles. There's a couple code... Three code vehicles, I believe, that we've replaced and nobody in the city wants to use them. There's a one-ton truck, a Chevy... About two one-ton trucks, one Ford, one Chevy, and a Ford dump truck. All of those may potentially, because of parts or whatever, go over. It's filed a list of 12 or 13 items, but the council has to approve the disposal of anything over $1,000.
Next. See how easy that was?
The VACON truck, as you have heard, has... That is not working. Part of the problems of it is the Derby's tank assembly and the tank needs to be replaced. We have a quote from that on it specifically for $32,950. A new one runs between $150,000 and $180,000.
Yeah, more than that now.
More than that now. The chassis and frame and everything of this is still good. The engine for the... The haulset is still fine. I feel they can get more years out of it if we just replace the holding tanks and everything.
So, this is just a repair, extensive repair rather than a big system?
It's an extensive repair. I think when you do that, I mean, you go back to the manufacturer that has done it usually and has the... That fits exactly what's going to be on the rest of the truck. Then we have... Actually, we have two one-ton dump trucks that have now been redlined by the service garage, one in water and one in sewer. What I propose is replace the one in water because we don't have a whole lot in sewer. To do that, that would be the one-ton's run 40,000?
Forty to 45.
Forty to 45.
We passed one in sewer for $52,000. I don't know... Did that ever get purchased?
I don't recall one in sewer. We did one in the street department.
No, I mean, I did one in the middle of summer. It's out there. And we can de-appropriate the money if you want.
I don't recall it.
It's there.
Okay. If we've already got it, then we won't need the ordinance.
Because it was late, remember? You came up and said it was late. Maybe it was streets, who knows? You said it was late and we didn't have any more at that price. They were all sold out. It was maybe in August?
I thought that was streets. I'm not sure.
I'll check on it.
Why was I doing... Well, I... Yeah, I mean, it was just after we adjourned the ticker.
I thought Andy ran into that problem of ordering shoes.
It was in a car that asked for it.
Yeah.
So, it wasn't paid.
Well, maybe we are... I did not recall that being in that August special session.
No, no, it was way before that, it was July.
But...
Go back and check.
Oh, we'll figure it out.
In a number of different funds, we... For some reason, it's a year for refunds. Code had $200 down for refunds. They've spent all $200. I need to increase it. Garbage fund, who had very little on refunds last year, had 500. They've spent, I think, it's 360 of theirs so far. And it was all because Taco Bell was paying it locally and they were paying it corporately. They caught it and wanted a refund for some unknown reason.
I can't imagine why.
Can't imagine it. We think the water and the sewer fund's okay, but I've got... I've yet to get a report from Recreation as to any refunds for their... For it. From the government channel and the website, they want a Mac Pro, a parallel desktop Mac, 17-inch monitor, some software, Apple Care Protection Plan and everything. He has a proposal here for $8,204.43.
Oh, 7207 is where the thing was. Oh, 7207?
What department was that? It was a water?
Water.
Water, okay.
Oh, 7207.
Okay.
We're way ahead of you.
And which was that, 45?
We don't need that ordinance.
Thank you. Amy is so organized.
Yes.
New computer for the government channel. But I'm sorry.
Well, it's really for the overall computer system that we have as much as anything because it's... It doesn't... It isn't going to impact the government channel itself. It's his other job of doing the computer system for the city. It gets impacted by this. It's part of his network setup. Where we think it's not covered by the Newcom contract. But he managed the new system under Newcom's contract with wireless technology a lot more better than what he does. And he could run a parallel desktop this way. I have a... It's too technical for me. Ron said he needed it. The system would be much better, better.
This is to work with the new communication... Internal communications package that we...
No, that's...
Yeah, we'll work with the new one, yeah. Let's see. In the community center, we've received, I think, $16,500 grant for equipment at the community center from the Department of Health was where it was staged. What we would like to do is, we have seven-year-old electricals. They don't have a lease purchase plan or anything. They cost $4,295 each. That and shipping will be $13,490. And then, we feel that the 300 chairs back in the back community room have had seven years' worth of coffee stains and everything else and probably need to be rotated out. Totally, this will mean a cost in the neighborhood of $20,000. But with this 16.5 that we have, plus we already have, I think, 18.28s that were been appropriated and not spent, we can allocate it to that. We'll need... We'll use about $2,200 of capital improvement money as it'll be new appropriated that we don't have a grant coming back for. But we'll be doing a lot of improvements there for it.
So, you're taking 22 out of regular cap, not Recreation, right?
Right. Recreation cap is all gone. And we have a couple of issues in there and I haven't... The auditor's office hasn't gotten a final on it. Because it's how do you look at replacement of things? Like, for example, the heater in the pool locker room areas. We always keep that at 40, 45 degrees in the wintertime so we don't have problems. It's dead. Needs about... So, to get a new one, but it would be energy-efficient, $1,700. Got two slides that are taped off and not done. One is a larger section. The other, the two together is about $1,700. So, that's like 2,700 I need. And then, the 740 or the 270, I've got, I think, $1,845 left in cap to do. So, that's another... You know, if the auditor's office says, yep, you're replacing a capital asset or, you know, a section or a portion of a cap... Same thing with the VACON truck. We're increasing the value of that asset in my mind. So, yeah, we've got a few things like that that have come up. I also do want to do some... From looking in more... Recreation has been... It's been a banner year. I mean, 438 kids... Children signed up for the soccer... Youth soccer program from kindergarten through sixth grade. Got 33 teams competing. Aaron wants more soccer balls.
I can't imagine why.
And we just bought new nets and everything for... At the new field, which was in the other appropriation. So, we need some items in Recreation, but we have the income to be able to cover. And what I'm looking at is, because in Arts West, Emily wasn't hired until May, mid-May, as full-time. I've got, I know, at least 10,000 or more savings in my 100 series. So, I may just move from the 100 series down to the other. But I wanted you to be aware that we were doing that. It might not take new money, but it would take a transfer that council would have to approve. I think I'm forgetting something, Kathy. What am I forgetting that you and I and Jim talked about?
There were a lot of things.
The bond? Yeah, you had the... The renewal of the bond or did we... Did you want to talk about that more? I know you had the reading on it, but I was not...
We had one reading on it. We were looking for more information about FEMA income and the payments that have been made. And I don't think we have that yet. Maybe, hopefully, we'll have it by next week.
This is the one we were interested in seeing that we're paying down some part of the principal?
I don't know what I'll remember later that I forgot.
The Hocking Valley Bank loan. We'd like to know why we're not paying off at least $200,000, I think. As opposed to just rolling it.
Yeah, we'll follow that up.
We did talk about that, but we'll know more once we close out August. We don't get... There's quite a bit of money in comber for that project. And maybe if we uncover some of it, then that will bring up some money in the beginning. We just wrote the ordinance so that we could roll the entire amount over if we needed to, but that isn't really our intention if we can pay anything on it.
Okay. That's what we were concerned about, that we want to pay as much as we can.
Yeah, we just don't have that figure, but we wanted to start it through council. Yeah, we just don't have that figure, but we wanted to start it through council.
Okay.
If that makes sense. Would not, you know, my intention not to pay anything, but we'll see.
We weren't worried about your intention, we know you weren't.
I always want to pay something.
Okay, I think that's, and then the miscellaneous, Paul.
Just a question for Rick. You've been working a lot with the Recreation Department, and I know a couple of years ago, they did that MAXIMUS study.
Right.
Have you seen any way those can be correlated? I mean, we never really did much with that, if I remember.
Well, where I'm using it primarily is looking at the fees and such that we're charging for various things at the community center. I know we went up to like $27 for soccer, new soccer this year. We've also used it as justification in doing the, I guess, lease of, of space to the lakefront bus system, and we've been able to document better that our costs of using space and using people, people are. So I see some ways of using it, but part of it is just a balance between what do we want to, what do we think the market will, will have, you know?
Okay.
Bear, I guess, is the, is the biggest thing, and still make the community center fairly affordable for most folks, because when you look at it and you see, if it's $225 or something, or $230 for a family to use that, and it's 2250, or it's, it's $2.50 if you buy the ticket to just go in, and you just divide, okay, that's 50, or, see, for every $100, that's 50 visits, that you have to be able to say, I'm going to use it that much. So how do you look at all over your price structure? So it's being used, I know copies in both the Assistant Recreation Director's offices, and we've talked about it at our Recreation staff meeting as to how we can better use that, because there was a mindset at one point in time that I was being told, oh, we're covering our costs while we're covering our costs of people involved, but not necessarily of the director or the secretarial people or maintenance folks. I mean, direct provision of services is covered, but the other items are not necessarily all covered.
Just wondering, since you're on topic right now, I figured you could look at it.
Oh, we looked at it, yes.
Any other questions? We're adjourned.